I'd like to leave events to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the soul with liberty and no struggle.
Thank you. Good evening. Our first order of business this evening is to address the bond fund. To provide a little bit of context here, the bond fund is a fund that we have, and I forget the woman's first name. Okay, good. Elizabeth Vaughn put aside some money for the town to use for largely for winter recreation. Every year in March, we will accept applications for essentially the growth of that fund each year. And this is just a kind of a formality order of business to elected a chair and a treasurer for the bond fund, kind of more of an administrative kind of thing. I believe as it stands today, I believe that I am the treasurer from before and Jack was the chair. And so we need to elect a chair and a treasurer and then just move as item number two. Take your minutes from our last meeting. And just, I'll just put my two cents in here. The process to get kind of approved and all the paperwork and stuff to be on the bond fund as either the chair or the treasurer is a little bit cumbersome. So I'm just going to go ahead and suggest it probably makes the most sense for me to stay on because I'm already on it. And then we add somebody else. So I will, I'll go ahead and take the chair position, I guess, and nominate myself for chair of the bond fund.
I'll certainly that one.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And then I'll go up, go ahead and offer a motion to nominate Jeff as the treasurer of the bond fund, giving his first chair. Second, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Sorry in advance Jeff for the administrative aspect of getting onto the front. All right, and then item number two is minutes from our meeting, our lack on bond fund meeting on March eighth, twenty twenty two.
I'm Adam Chair. Make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes for the bond fund on March eighth, twenty twenty two as written.
Do a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, for now, here we can move into our regular council meeting. We have five counselors present, the manager, the assistant manager, town clerk, and we also have Denise, our economic developer, present. And minutes from November twenty second.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from November twenty second, twenty twenty two as written.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion five zero. Next order of business, signing the treasurer's warrant.
Adam Chair, we sign the treasurer's warrant in the amount of when my computer catches up with my finger. Nine hundred and thirty eight thousand, sixty two dollars and fifty two cents dated twelve eight, twenty twenty two.
Second, your motion and a second for discussion, this one, this warrant does include our school payment. Therefore, it's a large one. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signing treasurer's warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, reporting presentation, we're talking about TIPS tonight. Want to kick it off?
Sure. Sure. Thank you again for having us this evening. We had a great workshop the other evening, I've got a lot of great feedback. Incorporated some of the information as well. And I wanted to introduce with us this evening Shauna Cook Mueller from Bernsteinshire, who's been working with us on the TIPS since we began with this and worked on the original ones. And also is one of the top tip hurries in the states, I just wanted to share that with you folks. So tonight we'll be talking a little bit about the Pumpkin Town amended program as well as the new transit oriented district. Shauna will review what the application entails and with the benefits to self grow it. And we'll be open to question and answers. And just a reminder at a high level that any of these tip district funds, remember, we actually save seventy cents on every dollar or sixty nine cents. So let's just be exact. But the total tax counts right now bring us at sixty nine cents on every dollar. So with that, I'll just turn this over to Shauna. And then we'll both be available for Q and A after clearly.
Yeah, very nice to be with everybody. It's so, it's such a treat to come here.
Thank you for coming.
So I think I'm going to just start by talking about tips generally because I, that's what I do, five to 10 minutes. Most people don't deal with tips every day the way me and my colleagues do. So just a refresher and for probably many of you. The way the tip program works is there's a state statute that authorizes municipalities to enter into or develop development programs and establish districts to incentivize economic development. And economic development is quite a broad definition under the state of Maine statutes. And that's, I think, appropriate, especially in a state like Maine with a lot of rural area. Business means different things, you know. So that's important to note. And the way that TIP districts work mechanically is you put your arms around an area in the municipality and you freeze the assessed value. And so the incremental value added to that area gets segregated as what's called captured assessed value and the taxes paid on that captured assessed value go into a segregated fund for the TIP project costs that are outlined in your development program. So those are project costs that range in different ways. And we'll talk a little bit about the different things you can do with TIP revenues. But those are both authorized under state statute and you've outlined them in your development program that the council is asked to approve. The, the important financial aspect of TIPS, as Denise already talked about briefly, is the, the tax shift benefit. And this is where the, the real power economically for municipalities comes in. And just to refresh everyone about how that works. Outside of the TIP world, every municipality in the state has what's called a state valuation. That's the total amount of value in your community and it gets equalized across the state so you can compare apples to apples. That number is used in all sorts of things. It's used to calculate your state subsidies for municipal revenue sharing and state education, state aid to education. It's also used to calculate county taxes and your additional local debt budget towards your, your school district. The theory being that as you get more value, you have a better ability to pay for things on your own and you can do with less subsidy and you can do with a little bit more obligation. And there are other things that go into those formulas, but that's the basic dynamic with respect to state valuation. When it comes to TIP, the captured assessed value in a TIP district is invisible to that state valuation. And so another way we talk about it is that tax shift losses exist whenever new value comes into a municipality. So you may get a hundred thousand dollars of new tax value on a new property, but you actually lose sixty nine cents on the dollar for each of those new dollars due to this tax shift because you end up getting less subsidy and having greater obligations. So in fact, a hundred thousand dollars is, it's only, you know, thirty one percent of that in reality. If it's in a TIP district, it's still a hundred thousand dollars. And so that's a really important incentive, particularly when you start to look at the ways in which you can use TIP revenues broadly under the statute. And so if these are things that you think the town would value anyway and would want to spend anyway, then it's just a financial no brainer to do it through TIP. That's, that's sort of what I always like to make sure is a baseline understanding in the room. And then I just want to talk briefly about these two applications that we've been preparing. One, it relates to what is currently called the Pumpkin Town Road and CMP corridor TIP district that you already have in, in town. And this district has been, what we've done in the application is expand the list of projects so that as TIP revenues accumulate or are generated each year and you have a broader array of things you can do. And on an annual basis, you can determine exactly how you want to spend those. And so we've, we've increased the range of types of things that you can do. Doesn't mean you're obligated to do any of them actually, but you need to spend TIP revenues on those things. And you know, the other thing I just wanted to note is that this program is quite flexible. While there's a legal process and documentation required to amend these things, it can be done at any time during the term of a district. And so if you notice, you're accumulating a lot of revenue and you don't have ways you're really valuing to spend it in the development program, you can terminate these things early, you can reduce the captured value. You can look again at the statute for addition. I mean, this is sort of what happened here is the statute has evolved over the last few years. And so there's more opportunities than used to be there. So you can amend it to admin projects, which is what we're doing today or we're considering having you consider doing this year with respect to this district. The other thing I wanted to mention is that there's some conversation among staff about whether that, the name of this district should be changed. And so to the extent the council wants to move forward with this application, we'd love feedback tonight about, about that so that we can get the documents up to date. And so I'll let, I'll let Denise and Jennifer talk about that. But first, I just want to also talk about this proposal for a new transit oriented district. This is a particular type of TIP district under the statute that's meant to acknowledge the sort of inextricable link between transit and economic development, getting workers to work is the idea. And it actually is quite broad, so you get all of the opportunities that an economic development TIP district will get and you get some additional flexibility to incentivize or invest in even to the extent that exists in South Berwick. So that, again, another sort of aspect of people thinking transit means in the Portland metro area, but there's transit really all over the state. So you'll see in this TIP district proposal that there again is a significant set of options for project costs and ways that you can spend the TIP revenue. And many of those ways you may well recognize from your general fund budget. And again, that's an opportunity to save dollars for the taxpayers here if you were already going to spend those out of the general fund. I think that's really all I wanted to say for introduction and maybe Denise, if you have anything to add, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that, that votes have.
Um, I think at this point, you know, we want to have some feedback on if we want to change the Pumpkin Town, you know, where we just changed the Pumpkin Town Road district, we can talk about that. It just, what the application, I know that there were questions last time about the complexity of the information. And looking at the development program, it's a very complex development program. But at the end of the day, it's really simple. I mean, if you take a look at just the bulleted, bolded areas, you can see a lot of general fund synchronicity where you can actually move things from the general fund into the TIP district, keeping in mind that basically we would take, you know, a lot more money, seventy percent more out of the general fund to create, to find a certain amount of a project rather than shift it one hundred percent funded out of it. So if these project areas that have been identified resonate with you and are things that you can actually see that would be of benefit for self growing, then it makes more sense to fund them out of the, of the TIP rather than out of the, the general fund. And that's where there's a savings. You'll notice that part of the savings before that, it was pretty much economic development salaries and operations. One of the big things here is active pro rate portions of the managers and the assistant managers and finance operations, accepting, planning, you know, accepting and codes, those types of positions could actually be paid at a pro rate of portion. And so that automatically is something that's already in the, the general fund budget that can be shifted. Significant capital, for example, we do not know, sorry, the outcomes of the, the transit study, the transportation study, the route one signalization. So just the signalization alone could actually a hundred percent be funded out of either one of these two districts and not have to come out of the taxpayers' general fund. So those are type of capital expenditures that can be shifted. I think that was it that I wanted to add. Tim, did you have anything else you wanted?
No, I'm just going to, what name were you recommending to change the Pumpkin Town to?
We're thinking of Pumpkin Town Business Park. And then this way it still retains the Pumpkin Town for those folks who have become familiarized with the road. And then to Jennifer's point, when we were having the conversation, what if there are roads that spin off of Pumpkin Town? So if we call it Pumpkin Town Road, it may not be essentially just Pumpkin Town Road, if we add other parcels. So with the Pumpkin Town Business Park, at first we thought industrial, but industrial sounds like just one type of business versus business park to be manufacturing, to be industrial, to be mixed use, to be anything. So it left it more open and, and so I think that's what we were thinking. If that would be to your approval and then we could, you know, alter the documents and have them ready for the public hearing.
Madam Chair, can I just make a, yeah, a comment? I think we definitely, I know there's, we're kind of split on keeping Pumpkin Town. But I definitely, a lot of people might not know that it actually has historical reference to our town. Just a little quick thing, it was Pumpkin Town was also once known as Emery Town or Emeryville. And it was a village situated at the corners of South Berwick Elliott and York, Maine. And at its peak, between seven and 10 families gave the small town its population of somewhere between thirty and forty people. And the families operated sawmills, a granite quarry and a brisque mill. So I think as representatives of our community, it would be in our best interest to, as we grow and change as a town, but we also need to preserve our historical sense because South Berwick is, you know, has a lot of history to it. And I think adding industrial or, you know, whatever is fine, but I really think that we probably should keep the Pumpkin Town part of it.
Agreed, that's the rub.
Good feedback.
Okay.
Just a note where, when they developed the TIP, Pumpkin Town was two words. When the council adopted the road, you made it one word. They want to consider that with your name.
Good point, thank you. I was going to ask that question as I brought it up. We can easily make it one word.
And it's acceptable, it says Pumpkin Town as one word or Pumpkin Town as two words. So either works from a historical perspective is more than fine.
Yeah.
Well, the signs may, we hate to have to change that, so we might, we'll make it. It would just cost more money if things suck. We just have to change everything.
Are you just looking for consensus from us?
Yes.
And this specific on one word or two word. Exactly what we're going to call.
What are the implications for changing that word?
There, there's no, I mean, it's, it's just what it will go by officially under the state records. And so it does, it is required that the title include Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District, but the stuff that goes at the front is, is Pumpkin Town Business Park.
Right, so over time, as she goes to go out and sell that to different companies and businesses and things, you know. So I'm sitting at the table and I have a cereal manufacturing company. It's not industrial, so I don't look itself for it because I'm looking to expand inside of Maine, but that's an industrial park, I'm not going there. I'm going to, I want to find someplace to mix business use that I can not only make cereal, but I can open a cereal restaurant in the morning, the same thing. So if it's a business park, then it looks like it's more, more multi-use and people would, I think, be more attracted to it.
Alright, so it's, it's giving some definition for marketing and that's really where it is. It's not, it's not that we are trying to get away from some clarity so that we don't have people creating signs and pumpkins on it because it's not Pumpkin Town, right?
No, it's going to, under the Pumpkin Town, that's got, that's, that was done with the issue. The issue is, business park industrial, that's the same, whether it's the same thing, that's the Pumpkin Town, then it was direct.
Yeah.
Okay, that could stay, that was out of the issue, it's just broadening the scope of what it looks like when you're trying to sell it nationally to businesses across the nation. So then post an industrial park with business.
Yeah.
I got you. Thank you.
All right, so then I would go ahead and offer up a motion to move forward renaming the existing Pumpkin Town Road and CMP corridor Municipal Development TIP district to Pumpkin Town One Word Road Business.
We don't need the road. Pumpkin Town Business Park and then the rest of what?
Okay, Pumpkin Town to Pumpkin Town Biz, Pumpkin Town One Word Business Park and Business Park Tax Increment Financing District. All, all the other stuff.
Yeah, we'll include the other required components.
Okay. Second. Did we get that? Okay.
Sean, can you repeat that? I can if you want.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will rename the existing TIP district. Any other questions or anything that you all wanted to share with us?
I gave you a copy of this, a quick cheat sheet that we, the staff developed, I want to thank again. And Denise, and they actually took, after they made this and walked around, started talking to different staff members and said, does this make sense to you? Oh, that doesn't make sense, so we change this. So we now, you've got it, we're going to put it on the website as well so you can simply refer people to the website. I think it answers the frequently asked questions, the basic ones. If there are, and so beyond that, I reviewed both applications, I didn't see anything. There's, there's, did we expand a little bit on Pumpkin Town? Tip where we can spend our money on, did we expand some of that?
We expanded it to look pretty much at everything that's in the transit.
In the transit, we match those two.
So now like your accumulated funding right now, it's in there, had very, very limited capacity to spend on general fund projects. Now with the expansion, there's a whole lot more that it's able to fund. And that's a really good thing. I think the original applications with the amendment may have had nine or so items and now we're upwards in the, you know, the high twenties, so.
Yeah, so the purpose of the Pumpkin Town was the expansion to match the transit TIP district. And, and both of these, we need economically to move town forward for the next 10 to 20 years to save taxes paid to all, bring business to town and do projects.
I think one other thing if I may add, I mean, the, on a basically very conservative estimate based on last year's numbers. The Pumpkin Town will generate about four hundred and one thousand dollars, right? And that's with no, no increased tax.
Those coming here.
There's no growth in the year, so easily, and then we have the CMP substation expansion that's going in. And so that's going to be, or the gas line I should say, and that's going to bring another 20 million evaluation. So that's going to jump, right? So we're going to have a lot more. And year one in the transit oriented TIP district is projected conservatively with current tax rate, current conditions, current valuation of about sixty seven thousand. So between the two with the expansion, they're looking upwards of about five hundred thousand to be able to spend on economic development program initiatives that are all listed in these programs, which includes salary tax shifts, capital. I think another one is, I think Jen and I, when we talked this afternoon, you know, you have fire equipment. And so your new payment, you can pay like fifteen to twenty percent of that and come out of TIPS. And so there, there are things that will be able to shift in a tight tax year to the, to the, to the TIP district. So it's a very, very critical, critical time to be able to make this happen.
Yeah, this is going to be a big tax.
I was trying to be nice.
And then we're still, we have our public hearings scheduled in a couple of weeks on the twenty seventh for both of these. And then that's sort of like a final step to get the application submitted.
Yes, and then at the end of that, there, there is a motion in this and we will talk about that. And when Jen puts together the, and Barbara puts the motions together, there's going to be a draft motion that's actually already in here. So that the evening you post the public hearing and unless you hear something that's just going to make you say that we need to delay this, that you can take action that evening. It will be hopefully that, that we can do that. And then they will work on closing up and buttoning up the full application, which includes Barbara's draft minutes and sending that all up to our best up early January so we can have approval before the budget year completely starts.
So in, in the purpose of sending it to Augusta and getting it early, part of what Denise was talking to us about, we're not the only ones applying for TIP at budget time, trying to get them into the state, check the state to approve. Trying to get the state to approve anything, as you know, the wonderful concept. So we want to get in first and get to the top of the, you know, pile and then have Tiffany Robbins go in there and scream and holler and push and do her magic up in Augusta she's posted. Correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's, we're moving, and I, again, I want to thank Denise and Shauna and Jen and all the staff that helped, you know. These normally take about six to eight months to work, to put together. And when Denise showed up, you know, the day I hired her, she said, what's my marching orders? And I said, ah, you have until Christmas, get it done. Don't stop.
I'm almost making it. Yeah.
She, she did. So I want to compliment her and Shauna and Jen put a lot of time into this and I, I certainly as a manager, you made my job easy. And I know the council certainly appreciate your efforts, thank you, that's why we hired you. Good job, good job, Shauna, good job, Jen. And this, we'll see the benefits for this for 30 years.
Yeah.
So this is going to be huge, so I just want to thank the staff.
Yeah, thank you all.
And I just want to add that one, the council, this is a lot of information to digest. Yes, I've been able to do it in short order, but I can't do it in shorter without your support. So, and you know, Tim can't do it in shorter without your support, so it's very, very critical. And you're the representatives of this community and that's who we're trying to benefit anyway, right? So, so thank you.
I have one quick question. So I know we're applying and we have to wait for state approval, is there a concern of this not getting approved?
Yeah, that's a great question because the legal process requires you to approve it and then we go to the state.
Yeah.
We've already had a pre-meeting with the individual at the state who reviews these applications to make sure she, she went through the whole project list. That's where we want to make sure that she doesn't see something that doesn't quite fit. She actually gave us some feedback about language changes just to make sure it was more aligned, which we incorporated without changing any of the meeting. So I'm not concerned at all.
Okay.
She always will have some feedback about and questions in the review process, but they're never going to be issues that are, you know, not things that we could just change. You actually, if you will look at, and part of why we have long form orders where you'll be asked to approve them in, in later this month is that we give some delegated authority to the manager to make changes to facilitate approval so long as they're not substantive in nature. And so well, that's part of what that process at the state will involve. And if there's anything that's substantive enough, he's going to decide to come back to you first. But that's, that's how it works. So we will expect an approval letter from DECD probably six weeks after we submit is, you know, depends on how much is on their desk, but that's what we try to shoot for.
Okay, great. Did you, did somebody have another question? Anybody?
I didn't.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in reading, I'm looking at the first one, that was the transit. Just when I'm looking at that, this is what the public hearing on the twenty seventh will be on, correct?
The entire application, yeah, and the development program. Both applications, we have two of them.
Oh, okay, alright, so just trying to think of some of the questions that popped up in my mind, so one, I was really excited to see, so we're central mentioned in, in the application. I think they're obviously a good, a great piece of the town. Are these promises or obligations? Cause, or are these just, these are just check marks, like we could do this, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And I think the easiest way to explain it, it's, it's like, and I did this when I was in Yarn, it's like the menu approach. You want everything included, it's not promised, it's not guaranteed, we will not generate enough money to pay for everything that's in this program. Just won't, simple as that. And so what happens every year is when you go through the budget process, it's up to staff and council to prioritize who they want to fund out of these programs. And you also have an accumulated wealth, if you say, in, in the Pumpkin Town that you can possibly spend down in one year unless you want to fund a hundred percent of a traffic signal or a new fire station or, you know, whatever it is that you want to fund. And so you want to be able to just budget so that you're not exceeding what you're annually accruing. But you also don't want to be underspending to the point of where you're at with the 1.1 million dollar, is it 1.1 million dollar balance? Right, which is going to serve you fine, you know, should be this traffic signal or other projects, you know, so. But yes, and, and so the other piece, I mean, I haven't seen it, but I actually saw in one public hearing where somebody said, what about this project? And so you make an amendment. And so you make an amendment, and you add that, and then we make that amendment. And so you vote on the motion with the amendment to add. Well, do speak more to that.
Yeah, so, so procedurally, what we like to say is that whatever is, whatever application is in front of you and that's been made available to the public. You know, leading up to the public hearing, that's what you're voting on up or down. Um, if there's something that we all missed in preparing it and it comes to light in the public hearing. Um, we would suggest you delay and redo the hearing because the theory under due process is that. That issue hasn't been made public. And so someone might have chosen to come to the hearing that they didn't if they'd seen that. Um, so, you know, that, that's, um. Can sometimes be surprising to some folks who think, oh, we should be able to respond in the moment to a public hearing comment. And actually you can, but then we got to redo the public.
So if that does happen hypothetically, would it be better off that we up or down that night so that we can get it done and then come back and do another amendment?
Because. That's the other option. If you want to move forward, I know your timing is such that you want to get feedback. You know, before you get really in earnest into your budget process, then you could vote to approve it as is, and then we could do a subsequent amendment.
Shawna, would you either be available for that meeting to come? Or be available by speaker phone or, or tag in on. On, uh, Zoom or so that we, in cases of questionable procedure, you can answer it.
Yeah, I believe that my colleague Amanda Methard is. Yeah. Either come or be available, either one that, whichever you prefer, but she, she can. Handle that for sure.
Okay.
She, she drafted this. I read it. She had a conflict tonight, so you have me.
Okay, so she'll be here, she'll be to be here, be in on Zoom. Okay, great.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments on? Applications?
Okay.
All right. Thank you both for coming tonight. Um, I'm really looking forward to. The public hearing and. But all goes well. Thanks so much. Thank you for coming down. All right, um, public comment is, we don't have anyone in the room. Is there anyone on the phone that has something, um, they wanted to bring up? That's not on the agenda later on? All right. We're going to move on.
Bye.
Thank you.
Uh, we don't have any unfinished business this evening. Um, however, we do have our new business number one. Um, we have a resignation from the library advisory board.
Let's hope no. Hilda can't go. Don't want to say about that.
All right, Don, you want to make that mention?
To not let her leave? Oh, I'll make it. But then she's going to grab me by my ear. I know, it's a. It's a huge sad day to lose Hilda in any capacity.
Yeah.
This town.
Yeah.
She has done.
So much.
So much for the town, the schools. All of us kids that got boo boos. She's been fantastic. So. With that being said, I guess I will make the motion to accept her. Resignation and thank her for. Everything she has done for the town so far.
I second. We have a motion in a second. Um, just for discussion, we're just six up with Hilda Howells, right?
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, most people probably know who she is by first name, but.
Yes, I apologize.
No worries. Um, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Hilda, for all your service. Um, new business number two, New York ambulance contract update. Tim, I'm just going to let you.
So. Back earlier this year, we, we had some bump in the road. Uh, some, some operation I was going on with the ambulance service, staffing issues. Um, they reached out to in August, myself and Chief Hamel. They had hired a, uh. A, a, a company to review. A company called Pitch Associates out of Virginia. To do a, uh. An analysis of their business, its business. And what they were short of and so forth, and, and why they're having problems staffing issues. So they spent a couple of months, they came up to interview us, interviewed all and through the ride service board. Uh, then they came back and they met with us. And that was on seven twenty, we met with them. Uh, then they came back and they met with us. Um, on November twenty second, um, and the meeting was, had my report, you saw who was in the meeting again. Uh, Dawn, the fire chief. Two representatives from the board, their finance, the treasurer. Um, then by, by Zoom, they had the, uh, the. People from Fitch Associates. So. They called and right now we pay. A hundred and eleven thousand, if you look at the sheet I sent you. Uh, we, we budgeted the contract a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixteen. For ambulance service. They do about eight hundred calls a year. So they came in and they said, the problem that we had. They have right now. Um, is they're losing about two hundred thousand dollars a year in ambulance and transport money. So. What's happened is with Medicare and the way things are transporting, the way it works. You call for an ambulance. The ambulance shows up, treats you, takes you to the hospital. The ambulance can have the right to bill your insurance company. Bill Medicare. And then. In certain cases, go to collection and collect the remaining dollars from you. If the ambulance shows up and you don't get transported to the hospital. Because they're a five oh one C three nonprofit and their business, they can't do anything different. They can't bill you. So every time that there's an ambulance call. To which. They, they claim that a certain number, but so out of the eight hundred, it looks like it's, it's probably. Five hundred, three hundred. They said, I think they got their numbers crossed, but five hundred transport, three hundred non-transport. So they lose. A ton of money. So and then essentially in the end, what they presented us was. They're losing two hundred thousand dollars a year in business. And that's not a profitable. Well, business model, you can't survive if you dump them that much every year.
And that's all due to. Yeah, when, when.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's due to everything. So it's due to. And, and non-transport is one thing. The second, the second piece was. So they're paying their paramedics. One of the issues was staffing their trucks and paramedics, which are the required, they were supposed to be doing for us. They didn't have enough paramedics to staff the trucks. The reason, one of the reasons was they, they're one of the lowest paid annual services in the region. So, okay, they have their pay, they have their pay, their deficit gets big. So to be competitive, market across. Being for EMS. So. They looked at two hundred data elements and they're in a process. And with that, they came up with. Some solutions to their billing. Potential. Which is attachment A. So they presented us that and they said in year one. It looks like you would go up to a hundred and sixty one, eight hundred and eighty dollars in year. Two and three, year two would be one seventy two, one fifty three. Year three, one eighty two, year four, one ninety three, and then year five, two oh four. We talked about that, we talked about that increase. That was a palatable increase. I could get, get all that. And that's when the conversation went terribly bad. Uh, when Armin said, no, you don't understand. That's not a hundred and sixty one, eight eighty a year. That's.
The increase?
Increase.
That's in addition to the one eleven.
In addition to the hundred and eleven. So. I don't have that much money in the budget. The good news is we signed, Jen signed the contract. We have one more year in the contract. They said, okay, you can hold price. We appreciate it. You gave us a good opportunity because we're running deep in the ready. So. What does this mean? There's a whole bunch of things. The first part of it is. That we're not the only ones in this book. There's. Every ambulance service, mostly the state of Maine is in trouble. Um, there's a, right now, there's a panel that the state has assembled that is recommending. Infusing seventy six to eighty million a year to keep EMS services afloat by funding. Like for the non-transport and so forth. Tiffany, this is for you though. Tiffany needs to go to the state and fight this, this. Support this, um, the panel recommendation of seventy six million or eighty million. In the meantime, we, we have one year breathing room. That's all we're going to get. And we're going to have to decide. What we're going to do next. And what is that? What is that? I don't have that answer. It's not for discussion tonight. I've been talking with that. You know, so one of the things you've got to look at with this model. Is. Long, long-term, long-range. Long-range. Productivity, like doing this for a long ten years. So if this is going to go up to three hundred and twenty five thousand in the year five. What is year six to ten of it? And I can't continue, we can't continue that trend. We'll, we'll never, we won't. So one of the things in looking at the. Pop plan. Remax. And the, the first thing on the top of the list of priorities for the town is public safety. So this is important. We're going to have to figure out, we've got to figure something out how to pay. Elliot. And Burwick do not pay for ambulance service. They had an old agreement with. Stewart's Ambulance Service, that Stewart's Ambulance Service goes in and just takes the patients out and builds for that. I, I think, I don't know how much longer that's going to survive. So I think that there's going to come a time that's going to, those will be. Doing something different. In other places, such as the. City of Scarborough, town of Scarborough. They declared that. It was invited to testify in court, municipality, because even though you're a nonprofit. You're trying to maintain a, a service. That you can by ward ordinance, passing ordinance and bill for non-transport. So places like Scarborough, Paul and West Rock and now passing ordinances to build for non-transport. I don't think it solves all your problems, but it certainly helps with the funding when you're doing three hundred calls a year that are no transport.
But so, so, sorry, question, those instances where like Scarborough has an ordinance. We, do, do they have a contract ambulance service?
No, they, so they have their.
They have their own.
That, they have their certain amateur. So because they have, so we couldn't pass an ordinance allowing New York ambulance to do it. We would have to bring ambulance service back in-house under fire rescue, making a municipal service, then we could pass an ordinance that says that. And that's one of the things I've talked to Nick about, we'll put numbers around. But we're not only putting numbers together for the, the short term, understanding that if we did that. You know, and what we're going to have to do is, once you get into budget season later on, my. Myself and Nick and with Jen, we'll sit down with you and we'll put some hard numbers together. And show you some models of what this would look like. I don't have a good answer right now. All we know is next. Next year. They're proposing a hundred and sixty one. A hundred and sixty one thousand dollar increase in their transport budget. And that's going to break our bank. That's. We, we can pay it, don't get me wrong, but that's a significant, significant increase.
So are all those calls in South Burke or is that how many calls that ambulance service?
That's South Burke.
That's just South Burke.
They do not include calls, they were not including in that eight hundred runs. They're not including those calls that mutilated Elliot Burwick. And, and calls to Rawlinswood, which is paid for by their Rawlinswood contract. Now, if we changed to our own service, say down the road, just something we looked at, we would pick up Rawls, we would get that contract. So what we got to look at, what, what we're going to look at over the next couple of months. Is the cost factors of doing the initial setup. The problem where you would, you would, it would be painful. Would be the start. Okay, because there's, the, the first year we'd have to buy ambulance as a higher staff. In the first year, you're not generating any revenue. The years two, three, four, five and six, you begin to generate transporting revenues come back. Plus your billing contracts and anything else you get. So one of the issues is now this state, I, this newspaper article I sent you. If the state passes a bill, they start infusing eighty million dollars a year to the EMS system. And start. You know, giving them, let's say, they say, okay, smaller ambulance services. Under a thousand calls a year, we'll give you an additional two hundred and fifty dollars every ambulance call you go on. Maybe that'll be enough that our subsidy will be able to stay close to what it is. And we'll be able to just revive this. We, we've got a year, but I'm just, I wanted to have this conversation. The reality is. This is on our plate now. And within a year. There will have to be a high-paced. Decision, if the state doesn't come through with additional funding and fix this. We are going to be forced with either we. Jump this for five years, and they already said they will only do a five-year signed contract. So do we do this or do we do it our own selves? And. Eat the bull of the first year, the asylum clause. When we looked at the other costs, we figured we'd be pretty close in, in year four, five, three, four, five. And between billing services and passing our ordinance for non-billing transport. At. Breaking, probably wouldn't be even, but what it would be is we have better control. Because it become a municipal service, it become higher fire arrest. Is that the best answer? I, I don't know yet. I, I don't have any. You know. I, I almost passed up my chair. Anything you want to add, any? About this year in that meeting?
Yeah, no, it was just a huge increase, just.
Yeah.
You know, we were thinking, you know, it would increase forty, fifty thousand and yeah, we could probably handle that, you know, if we had to, but. Yeah, to bring it up a hundred and eighty thousand. If, if.
You mentioned that, what did you say, Elliot and Burwick have some sweet deal at the moment that.
It's an old contract that from years gone by. Where they said, you know, Stewart, so, so here's what happened. They don't have an ambulance in their town, okay? Make it clear. The ambulance comes out of New Hampshire, comes out of, um. Somewhere's worth of New Hampshire, Stewart's ambulance. So if you have a heart attack. Um, and I believe the, the odd has Stewart's also, the Kittery has Stewart's. So if you have a heart attack. They send first responders, they send a fire department to go with oxygen and Band-Aids and to. You know, help you out. And then Stewart sends the closest ambulance they have. The problem becomes when Stewart's doesn't have an ambulance available. They then dispatch your candle from Saltboro Fire Station. To go take care of the call on Elliot. And they're losing money because they're not billing, they're not getting the billing. They should be billing Stewart's ambulance. That's a practice for them to take care of. Those are, those are issues that. You know, I think in years to come, if we were to talk about. And I'm not saying we are, but if we looked at an alternative within the house, I think you look at an alternative of. Where it's going to face a service and Elliot's going to face a service chat.
Yeah, shipyard does Kittery, shipyard does mutually for Kittery.
Yeah.
So we have two on yard, we have two shipyard ambulances.
Yeah.
And they'll go out to Kittery.
Exactly.
Can't cover.
Right. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't have a good answer. I'm just making you aware. This is the first of probably many. Increases in. Service fundings that's probably going to show up on our doorstep.
They have no problem billing insurance. My trip from York to Portland was nine grand.
Yeah. So.
We.
That's a long, that's, that's forty minutes. Nine grand.
One thing. I asked about Elliot and Burick. I know that it's potentially a moot point now, but you said that. There, I don't know, the, the Stewart thing might. Fall through at some point, but like. If we're, if we're going to start thinking about having like our own. In-house, like under the South Burke Umbrella Ambulance Service, like is there opportunity to sort of like. Hold hands with neighboring towns and like, if they need ambulance service, like, you know, can we somehow like partner together and. You know.
That would, that would be part of model.
Yeah.
Part of the model would be that, so, so what you, what you're going to do, you're going to tip this thing upside down. So. For those of you who were here when South Burke Ambulance Service Inc. was here. It was a volunteer nonprofit organization, okay? The problem is that was not going to survive anyway, no matter what you did. That had to go away. So what you do is you end up taking a model. And you make it a business model and you flip it over. You run it for a profit as best as you can. And you'll, you'll never recoup a hundred percent because you can't, because it's a. Billing agency, right? So, but you start to run it as a transporting ambulance service for business. Your business is taking people to the hospital. And your business unfortunately is when. You know, so, so what's happened over the years. Is because of the change in the mental health system, change in the EMS doctors, medical system. People who don't have HMOs, people who don't have insurance. People who don't have healthcare, whatever. Know that if they call nine one one, somebody has to come by law. So now. I don't feel good. I. I, I, I'm having a. Stomach problem. I called nine one one. And I've called nine one one three times today because I don't feel good. I don't want to go to the hospital, but the ambulance comes, they check me out. They have to go by law. So every time that they, so. The. Kind of the, 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 one of the things the state's looking at is you're paying for standby, nobody's paying for standby time. And that's what's killing us, right? It's the standby thing. Because we have to pay an hourly rate, twenty dollars an hour for paramedic to be on duty. When he's not going on calls. It's not benefiting us, right? So we got to. So there's all these moving pieces, a whole. So there's all these moving pieces, I'm hoping the state will come forward this spring, I hope. I'm planning on scheduling a meeting with Tiffany to have a discussion with her on this. And, and to see if we can, you know, the, the manager's association, the main fire chief's association. The mania MS Association, everybody's behind the state funding support, they all know, and, and again, we're not only the three hundred and forty. Like, three hundred and forty-seven ambulance services in the state of Maine are in jeopardy right now. You know, the ones that are surviving are. The ones that are surviving are the ones that are billing non-patient, I mean, uh, non-transports. And running it strictly as a business without, so, so here's the problem with billing for no transports. Melissa's grandmother doesn't feel well. She has Medicare. And she's eighty-two years old, so she says, I don't feel good, I need help getting to bed, she calls nine-one-one, ambulance goes. So if we generate a bill for her. Medicare is not gonna pay it because it's no transport, the question is, do we go to collections to collect from that eighty-five-year-old woman? So do we look at it and say, we wanna be a nice neighbor, but we're losing money? So you gotta run it as a business model, unfortunately. Because if not, the burden is then placed upon all taxpayers, what every penny you lose. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing, it's a, it's a hard place to sit right now.
I just, I noticed that, um, represent, Tiffany, Representative Roberts, did you have something to add here?
Yes, thank you, ma'am, sure, I, I just wanted to weigh in real quick, and you know, if we want to. Once these recommendations hit the full legislature, um, sit down and do a workshop with myself and the council and you, Tim. Um, the study came out of the committee that I chaired and turned into a Blue Ribbon Commission because of the weight of the problem. From what I hear, there is every intention of supporting it, although it has a large price tag. But there is a huge emphasis on it is only a temporary Band-Aid. It's to save these, um, ambulance services from going under. And for them to be able to, to sustain, and where the state is at is we have to strike a balance between respecting home rule for you all. Um, but also not letting everything fall apart, you know, we could, we could in theory mandate, uh, something like. Uh, Mallory had said with kind of community service. Uh, services in towns, but we don't wanna go that far, so. I just wanna make sure that you all know that there is support behind the Blue Ribbon Commission's findings. Both on the health insurance billing side and on the just putting money into ambulance services. But I also need a huge emphasis on looking forward to another possible solution. And we can, we can circle back on this when we get further into the session, if you all would like.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, we'll be in touch.
Um, any other questions or comments from anybody else on it, you don't need any action from us.
No, no, this is just, I just wanted to get to you, to the table, so. As we begin to do budget, this, this will not be, this will not be the only one, if you saw the news the other day, CMP is proposing an. Four, a forty-nine percent increase. I, I, I don't know how people, you know, and, and, and it costs a lot of money to run a new cell, end of discussion. And, you know, but, but there's a tipping point where we say, I. Do you want me to do? You're asking for, you know, I mean, I, I sat there, he said, no, additional hundred and sixty-one, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And a hundred and sixty-one thousand. Then myself, how are we gonna pay for that?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, no matter.
Then you come to the table with that, with that.
I, I just wanna put in front of you that we're, we're patient, we're gonna pay some. About this year, then go on, you know, we have one year, but we only have, as much as that is, we only have one year. To make some hard decisions that are gonna be, no matter, no matter what we do with this, if we, we don't get state subsidy somehow. Or something changes, there'll be some tough changes, there, there's gonna be some tough stuff to come both, tough love to come with both. And it's just nothing, it's either that or we shut the doors and tell people, get yourself to the hospital, and if you wanna think that. You wanna hear something that's unpopular, that probably would be unpopular. That's, anyway, that's that, I'll keep you appraised as we move forward.
Yeah, um, so, in thinking about it, like, you sort of. So, if we, if we made, if we made the whatever South Burke ambulance brigade, or whatever the heck we call it.
I just, it, it just, it would go onto the fire department, it would become part of fire rescue.
Okay.
So be South Burke Fire Rescue, that's all it'd be, an annual to just become under their, uh, next jurisdiction.
Okay, and so.
So the administration staff is all there.
It wouldn't be a five oh one three C, it would be.
The town of five oh one C three, we're nonprofit, so it comes under our, under us anyway. But, but we're nonprofit, but as, we have home rule, so, right, we can pass laws. Pass a law that says you can't walk on the sidewalk after midnight. We can pass a law that says, so, we're not, Skyville's already done, Skyville's got it, well, we've got a Westford Scott. Uh, other smaller towns are starting to do it now, Stan is just, has got one going. That they're billing for non-transport. The problem is, is exactly that. You call them and you say, geez, Tim, you know, come on, I know you and, you know, uh, my son was sick that day and I don't have insurance, can you wipe that bill? Well, how many of those bills do I wipe out before that cost factor keeps going up and up? So it's, it's gonna be, there's no good answer, there's nothing at all that's a good answer that I can tell you right now.
So any increases, uh, like if we have, if. If we build an extra garage bay or extra garage space for our lead-up ambulances. Would that increase, it won't, because it's town property and town stuff, right? If we have a brand-new set of ambulance bays. Attached to the fire department, Denise was saying that she just grabbed the, the fire department. In our tip.
Yes.
That be money back into our tip? You see, would that work into the tip?
Well, the, the.
That's about a signal.
Right, a part, part of the, but, but if we were to add that construction.
Yeah.
And build that construction, so hypothetically, a, a million dollars to build that construction. We can take some of that money out of the tip, that's, that's how that benefits.
We're not, we're, we're not gonna make any more money. It's, it's a loss.
We don't, we don't have to add ambulance bays, we have ambulance bays now, that's where the two ambulances are. So we have ambulance bays, we have bedrooms where they stay, and kitchen, we have the infrastructure, we just don't own the ambulances. We don't have the staff personnel, the first year would be, you know, and, and we do this in a workshop, the first year we'd have to look at. Purchasing one or two ambulances and hiring the staff. And that's your first bump up, that's your first cost. And then after that, year two, three, four, five, you begin to see revenue, so you caught, then you would start to see. You know, three, four hundred thousand dollar revenue coming back to the system because of your building.
Right, easy parts of the ambulance.
That.
Easy parts of the ambulance. Staffing is gonna be an absolute nightmare. Absolute nightmare.
Same thing it is everywhere.
Yeah, exactly, everybody's struggling with paramedics.
Yeah, and, so to give you an idea, they, through the SMCC program. Those make community college and kind of a value community college, they produce about sixty-four paramedics every two years. And out of that, there are, right now, outstanding, there are about a hundred and sixty-eight paramedic jobs, just paramedics. Not advanced EMT, not basic EMTs, just paramedic available in the state of Maine. And those jobs are for fire department, which runs the EMS service, Westford Fire Department, Southfield Benefit. Or watch all these places who pay and have better retirements and have all those things. So you either jump into the pool and do it, or you stay in a private system and eat the cost. One way or the other.
Alright, yeah, um, so. Like they, we had issues with York Ambulance earlier this year, but they weren't available for transport. And we certified some of our firefighters in order to take.
We're working on that, we applied, we applied to the state, we haven't got notification of the state to do that yet. But we're, so, so what we have is we have some of our firefighters, our full-time firefighters and paramedics out of Dover. And other places and other full-time fire department, that when there's a call, there's no one around, they respond. And do what they can under their own private license, if you don't have the license yet. But that would be one of the things we started, we, we get, you know. Um, we would get a, a, a operational license for the fire department. They would say, okay, you can do it for this, well, and then we put them on our roster and then they can do more medical care here. Cost of that is we gotta buy some equipment. You know, that's, that's expensive too. There, there's just not really a good win right now, we're, we're looking at every alternative. But, you know, in the end, there, there's only two things you can do. You can stay with a private ambulance service and you're at their mercy for whatever cost they tell you it's gonna be every year. Or we go on our own and hope that we're clever enough and smart enough that over the next three to five years. Figure out how we can recover as much money we can and control billing and revenue services and cost ourselves.
Can we do a short-term contract with them?
They would not, they said the next contract would be five years. And that's the cost they gave us, that's correct?
What this cost was for. Were you into, because we had, we signed a three-year contract.
But, but, but after that. Right, after twenty-three, we have them through twenty-three, so for twenty-four, what they do with? Because even if we decided today, we all said, yeah, we're gonna do it, we're gonna start our own ambulance service. You're a year plus out before you even be there, right, between trying to get equipment, trying to get people, trying to get certified, doing the rest. We're gonna run out of that contract before we.
So the current contract will end June of two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, alright, so we got a little bit of time.
But, but I think in reality, going, I think of, I think if we sat down with them and said, well. We're doing, we're gonna go this route, but until we get that turned on. Can we maintain your service? I think it would work with us. I, I think, I have to ask.
That's just one of those.
But, but you're absolutely right, which is why, though it's two years out, it's time to have, start having those discussions.
Oh, yeah.
Because, we've gotta decide. At some point, you're gonna have, you as a board, will have to give me direction on what to do next. Whether that's, we go ask the public or. And, and, and I say, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't have a number, I, Nick's working on numbers right now. If I had to guess, pulling a number out of thin air, so please, this is not a, you know, the four to five hundred thousand dollar start cost first year. That's one movie, year two's three, four, or five, that. Five hundred thousand or the, 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 the next cost of salary benefits for employees and equipment. That starts to go down because you start to get revenue you're generating well.
That's figuring you're gonna triple the fire budget, so that's about right. Give or take, the first couple of years.
Yeah, well, i- i- that, that would always stay, that's gonna.
Right, but we, but on the other side, we'd be getting revenue back.
So right now, if, if I looked at, if I used their numbers, we'd be getting back, um. If I ran with their numbers.
Yeah, their total revenues are about one hundred thousand.
Yeah, so we'd be getting back about. Yeah, but that's, I don't know if that, I don't know if that's our, yeah, South Burke, so, so their total revenues. Are, well, they're, they're projecting three eighty-nine, so that's what we'd be putting back into the system, that's where we'd start.
Yeah.
Three eighty-nine, so forth.
And that's with billing, without billing for non-transport.
That's what I'll bill for non-transport.
Their, their first year figures, if they're billing for non-transport, isn't that bad, it's only five hundred and fifty. If you use, if you say they, they didn't transport three hundred people. Divide that out, it's five hundred and fifty a call, that's really. Not that bad for a staffed ambulance, if you look at it with everything they're gonna pay for, so it's, it's a huge number, but it's not that bad when you look at.
Right.
The difference, so. Paying for it if you had to charge somebody.
Right, but the, the difference it becomes is. They're very limited as a private corporation what they can do, we're not as missed out.
Right.
We have a lot more power and authority, because we can pass ordinances and govern the service. And the other thing they don't show in here, they said they're supposedly billing Burwick Mutual Aid, billing Elliot Mutual Aid, and this doesn't show.
Some other revenues?
Right, that might be other revenues. Um, and I don't see, this, this is not included in here. Is seventy-six thousand dollar a year additional for Rawlinswood service. So, so, you know, my, my thing is, we gotta compare the models. Not, and I know that, that when I say that the initial start-up cost is four hundred thousand, and that's, that's like, ooh. But you can't look at that, you gotta look at the five-year number, out, five years out, when we start generating, we get the revenues, we're controlling the employee. The cost, and then what happens, the stewards out of, they end up on Elliot and Burwick, our next-door neighbor. We offer them contract for service. And, and maybe, again, you gotta look at it like you're running a business model at that point. Cause, and, and. Um, York Ambulance kinda said it the best, they're running basically all this is the trucking. That Medicare pays for when you haul the patients. That's it.
That's it, yeah.
So we gotta be innovative, and if we're gonna do, we step outside that box, figure out how to do it outside of the normal trucking system. Just an informational thing, did anyone add?
Revisit it, when, when.
I'm, I'm gonna bring it, bring it to you, we'll, we'll, once I get, Nick, after we get through January, February. Once we hit March, I'm gonna have, I'll have higher numbers by then, we'll pull a workshop. Where I can present you what I think is some realistic hard numbers about alternatives, all of this. Depicts on what Tiffany is talking about with the state. You know, so hypothetically, the state comes in and gives them five hundred and fifty dollars for every non-transport they have, maybe our rates can stay the same for another couple of years. Gives us a little breather, I don't know, like Tiffany said. And, and I, and I'll caution you the same thing, that is a simple Band-Aid, because you're still dealing with a five oh one C three nonprofit. So what they did, they went up from twenty-one dollars an hour to twenty-eight dollars an hour for their paramedic, and they, they now have staff. Their, their, the ambulance is fully, since they've done that, they've had a paramedic on every shift for us. But they had to go up to twenty-eight dollars an hour. So they're asking for an increase. That's the issue.
Well, uh, revisit this, we learned, but, any other York Ambulance stuff?
Thank you.
Alright, here's the line, I'm in.
Oh, Tom Andrew, your report December thirteenth. For highway, they've taken two hundred and forty loads of leaves and been hauled from the transfer station.
Six-yard transit. What did they do?
John, you got it? Get him yet?
During my neighbors, Nick is not happy, that's all I'm gonna say about it.
I don't, where do they go? It's a, it's a, it's a place in Borough, it's recycling, the guy takes it, he, he mixes it compost and mulch and do it, I don't know what's up with it. Um, they're continuing roadside bowling while they can get whatever they can done. They're out, uh, early Monday morning at one-thirty for the first snowstorm, um, did a good job. Uh, yeah, people, people coming in from, you were showing me roads from Woburn and, and going in that way, when they hit. Southborough Road, the beer.
I don't see tar, it's like.
Police department last two weeks had two arrests, six accidents, sixty-one traffic stop, nineteen were off Wall Street. Um, they have all, the police department has received knock-in training for drug overdoses. Uh, style complete, um, every cruiser now has knock-in for the safety of the officers as well as the public, so they can issue. They can do that, imagine if, one of the issues, I guess, causes across the nation, it was a police officer in Arizona. Doing a search, patted down the guy, bag of fentanyl broke, and he had it on his hand, and didn't realize it, and put him in a cardiac arrest.
Oh.
So, they have now have knock-in at every cruiser, um, they're getting it to, um. Then get it to the school resource officer as well, so they can have it.
And Chief was telling us about, um, a new fentanyl that they're coming out with that's purple in color, that'll also like, it crushed Sweet Tart. So it actually contains children of the color.
And a very small, small amount, just powder of fentanyl, shuts your respiratory and your, your heart off, it kills you. And what the knock-in does, goes in and blocks that intercepting the brain, so it kicks back on. You're gonna tell the gas company offered a training, which several officers attended last week. Um, and also they offered grants available, safety items that all first responders, including fire employees. White department last two weeks had twenty-two calls. Um, and they're up to three hundred and ninety-five calls for the year, fifty more than there were last year at this time. Um, but they were honored to be asked to help make the Make-A-Wish Organization of Maine. Uh, who has some participating delivering a wish to a young boy. In town who'd be getting his, his wish trip for a Disney trip. Disney World, trip to Disney World is a grant. Um, he also happens to be obsessed with fire trucks and firefighters, so who can firefighters and assorted master clause. The house, which he do, we released to the family, was very appreciative of our support. They're excited. And the little kid really didn't care much about Disney trip as much as he did all the firefighters and fire trucks. Uh, Captain Shute is working on getting the twenty-twenty-two driver training laws updated. So they're required annually to certify their drivers, and that's what he's working on. So there, they ordered a new, or are getting a new records software program, which will track. Um, they're going live with that on January first. Um, they've been meeting with the implementation team. Um, and it's gonna track all their stuff that they can go pay for us for incident reporting. Uh, electronic training, maintenance, equipment, inspection records. Um, will all be on computers now, so we'll do everything with iPads and do all that stuff. So you ate a neck and. The department moving, that's huge to move that forward. Yeah, the part is, so we're, every time we did a fire call, they're required by being law to file a fire report. And then send those up quarterly to Fire Marshal's Office and Fire Marshal's Office categorize all that. Uh, we were still doing them by hand until Nick took over, and now they do them electronically. He does them electronically. They do them electronically. They just put them into a file, the file, someone, Fire Marshal Office. Code enforcement last two weeks, five building permits, two plumbing permits, ten inspections. She addressed seventy-one expired permit letters, sent out seventy-one expired permit letters. The twenty-twenty-one that went to the mail last week. Wonder planning, three backs of findings have been completed. San Diego Estates is the new subdivision needs. Who worked together with Town of Brewer. Plan joint workshop with them. Because the, the subdivision plans are requesting that they have a shared road between the two towns. Uh, several planning board members took some required training today on laws and policies. Main Municipal Association of Planning Training are supposed to get. Um, and Jenny and Amy, uh, had training today with Southern Main Planning Development with, uh, Lee. Lee and Jane. Lee is their senior plan, who's been, who's been doing this almost forty years, so. He came down today and did some stuff. Library, um, home for the holidays of the library at a jazz band went very well. Door come was two hundred and sixty-seven. Working on, um, our. Our diving project to preserve historic documents, working. With a book vendor to take back your old books for a credit to be applied to new books, and the new sign has been installed, the reference of. All the native plants by the entrance of the library for the native plant guy. Recreation.
Last Saturday, they did breakfast with Santa, which Santa was parrying elsewhere. So apparently that went very well. They had two sessions. Um, and there was about seventy people in attendance for both times. Uh, they have started training the staff for Powder House. Um, they also actually just got the, um. It's called an elevator by its middle left. They just got certified for that for this year. Ray Del Court, who is our Assistant Fire Chief, has been working with Nikki, who is the Director of Recreation for Safety Inspection at Powder House and the Community Center. The youth programs, uh, in the fall are wrapping up. And the ski programs are filling up quickly. She got a little concerned because of the transportation cost, the coach buses really went up in price this year. But, um, she's glad that they're still filling up. She's gotta get so many more just for her break even, so, but it's, she's almost there. And the seniors, um, had a Caribbean Christmas. They took a trip to Deversport, Mass last week. That was a big hit. Uh, they were having a great time. Next Wednesday, they're doing their senior Christmas luncheon with the Yankee Swap.
Yeah.
Assessing. She, uh, all the applications for the property stabilization was due for December first. She had three hundred and thirty-four applications. All the letters, uh, will be mailed out by the end of this week. So far, uh, seventy-five hours of time for just the assessing assistant. And it will be over three hundred hours for the assessor to verify and approve all the applications, the letters, all the steps to get all that process done.
That has been a huge burden for us. And, and it's gonna be worse next year. Three hundred people did it this year. It'll be six hundred seniors next year. And this is one of those unfunded mandates from the state. And I know Tiffany knows about this, but boy, I'll tell you, this. This is just killing us. It's. A huge amount of hours. We are way behind on our state assessing tax reports because. We only have a part-time assessment. There's nothing I can do to, you just can't get it done.
She's been, um, working diligently with the new company for the G I S, and she is almost there. She's thrilled. She gave it to me yesterday that, yeah, right there. Barbara is still working on data input from the elections. Car registrations, uh, seem to be slowing, and she's noticing more online registrations for E T Vs and.
Um, so on to Barbara's office. Um, I just wanna inform the board that. I have on my desk, um, Kathy Peterson's resignation retirement notice. Kathy's one of the two deputy clerks. Um, Kathy has decided to retire, and she drives it for loving it every day. She's. Been here all four years, um, and she's tired. She's ready to retire. She's had all the fun she wants to have. I don't blame her. Um, I did tell her that she can't retire till I accept her letter of resignation or retirement. I haven't accepted it yet. Uh, but we will wish her well. Um, she's done a great job for us and we'll advertise that position, but. You know, it's, uh. It'll be a struggle. She ought to find anybody. It'll take time to get them trained.
At the transfer station last weekend, they turned away ten out-of-state residents still trying to come down to our transfer station. And I think you guys are aware that I put some feelers out there about the composting at the transfer station. So Dan over there has been talking to people about it as well. And the comments that he's been getting is that most people are really concerned about rats and bears and bees and any other pesky animals that might. Be attracted to that compost pile. I did put the poll on Facebook and I got about thirty yeses and about ten noes. So it wasn't real strong either way. Um, Dan's getting more nos at the transportation when people are there. So. We really haven't made a decision. We're just trying to still gather information and see what the public thinks. There was a concern too that the buckets would have to be buried. And we're all tar over there, so I'm gonna look into that. That just came up the other morning as a question to pose to the Mr. Parks. Economic development, as you know, she's nearing completion on the tip projects in very short order since she's been here. She's working with a company that wants to put up a seventy-two-hundred square foot high-end woodworking building. Sure.
So that's, that's done. That's, I mean, he is, she, she spent, she had, uh, three meetings with him. And brought in code and planning to work with them. And did exactly what economic development's supposed to do. She brought him to town. So he is in a process of finishing his plans with an architect. And we'll be submitting them right after the first of the year to planning board. So, yay. This is exactly what we needed. We need to start bringing business to town for long-term. Future of the community.
Is that for Pumpkin Town up there?
Yeah. So it's gonna be, he's gonna do a five thousand square foot high-end building. He's in Rawlsford right now. And then, um, he's gonna sub we sell two thousand square foot spaces. For other businesses. So it's gonna be a flex. It's gonna be a mixed-use occupancy. Um, so that's. Exact, you know, that's what we wanted Denise to do and then.
Unfortunately, the pharmacy in town is permanently closed. They thought they had a new owner, but it's a workout. And then Lisa's gonna concentrate on grant research will be her top priority at the beginning of the year. Um, and on my end, I got the draft from the auditor on Monday morning, so I'm working with him. Uh, I had some changes and some updates that I asked him to do. He will be here, um, the twenty-seventh to present. Um, I had twelve different employee meetings regarding operations and concerns within their departments. I helped the police department and the business office change a procedure on parking ticket payments. That will keep them in their, or, um, in their accreditation. Keep cash out of that building. This building is, it all, they all send it back to us anyway, so it's just kind of streamlining the process. Um, I organized with Pete, our custodian, the Highway Department in I T, moved Denise's office and furniture and computers off last Friday. Uh, so she's in a new space upstairs on the third floor. She said it's very quiet and she's getting her steps in by noon time. She was sharing the space with Verna and Tyann and Verna meets with a lot of people. Denise meets with a lot of people. It's an open room, even though we had that cat wall. It, they were just, it was a lot of commotion going on in one office. So we figured if we separated them, they would both be, you know, hidden quiet and workspace and.
So we use one of the meeting rooms upstairs on the left-hand side. She's up.
Yeah, um, I met with Officer Stevens today regarding a non-payment issue. Um, helping cover for Dawn while she is out this week. I worked with Dawn and Amy to plan our Christmas luncheon in Yankee Swap, which is next Monday, the nineteenth. At noon time, which you guys are all invited. If you wanna pop in. Um, we're just having Hanukkah platters, um, and then we'll do a Yankee Swap after.
No alcohol and no firearms, please. Just saying. Alright, you can bring yours, I guess.
You do realize it's legal in town offices according to the state.
Yeah, okay, I know.
Just wanna make that statement up there.
No, I mean, I mean for the Yankee Swap.
No.
No, no giving alcohol on firearms.
Are you going? Cause I might give you one. Never mind, no.
Yeah, if you're a pleaser, we beat a, again, if you're coming, we know.
Yes, absolutely. Um, we got, uh. Package in the mail for what came addressed to Jenny. Uh, code enforcement, and it came with a note that said, I wanted to thank you, Tammy, Amy, Barbara, Verna, Tyann. And the whole team at the Town Hall for the pointers and the research help the other day. I hope that you all have a happy and safe holiday season. And he said that with a lot of chocolate, I mean, a lot of cookies. We, yeah, I just wanna. Yeah, I, I guess he spent about six hours there and talked to all the ladies and got all kinds of information and he was just very appreciative.
Barbara, can you elaborate what that was all about, you know?
I don't remember him. I'm sorry. He remembers you. Yeah.
It was the other day. So, I remember just the other day, we were having this conversation. She was saying she was getting forgetful. Anyway, they, they were, somebody, you know, came in and all the staff jumped in to help this guy, and they were about six hours, and they were attacking our kids and mass. Everything else, or whatever else they had to do. So I just wanted to, again, compliment the staff.
Yeah. We like to see the happy stuff as well as.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we're working on employee evaluations. Um, they were, are gonna be due to me by the end of January. Getting those all out to the department heads. Um, all the November month-end reports were sent out, uh, the last day of November. Before I went on my vacation to Florida, which was a really nice break and beautiful weather. Um, and I got really good news from the bank today. I have been bugging them for months to bring our interest rates back up. Because it was at one percent and then they brought it down to point one percent when COVID hit. And they informed me today that all of our accounts are going up to one point seven five percent. So that's like over a hundred thousand dollars. Nice. So, yeah, I was really happy to hear that today, so. That's why I share.
So on to admin, um, been thinking about the budget process. We've been looking out, projecting the next eighteen months. Um, you know, it's gonna be a tough budget year. Cost of fuel, cost C M P proposed. Twenty-nine percent increase. I don't know how they keep doing this. Propane utility cost plus cost inflation, gonna be a tough budget year. Um, Denise checked in with Svego Technics today, got some good information. Um, so there on a study update, the existing condition of the inventory is complete. Uh, Svego Technics has built in some traffic models, developing intercept, interception options right now. Um, both interceptions. After analysis, um, signal still meets the warrants. Academy Street intersection is very close to meeting the warrants for a signal. Not that you'd have them that close. Um, but it is considered that it's, it's a high crash location. Um, which makes it a case to be looked at. The goal is to have a technical deliverable mid-January to meet with the staff, week of January sixteen. Review the deliverables. At that point, we're gonna, we're leaving them to talk about the report, what it's gonna look like, how it's gonna get drafted. They'll then formally drop that report, and then the next step is that'll come to you here in a form of presentation. Uh, then I met with Bubble Works Director twice regarding operations, but. They were fire chief four times regarding operations, emergency management services, mostly the ambulance stuff. That was police chief twice regarding operations and grants. Um. Been in the clerk's office numerous, numerous times, procedural items. I don't know why that is, but. Barbara, what's it? Barbara, how do I do that? Why do I gotta do this?
Oh, damn it, Barbara.
Do I now just do it? Been in codes and planning five, six times, um, full codes, plans, update review. Uh, met with the economic developer eight times. You got in ten projects. Um, met with the tax assistant four times regarding the upcoming four four years. Three conference calls with the attorney, one on personnel, two on procedural. Um, did one department head meeting, conference call twice with the planning board chair. And now with three citizens or a friends town issues and their taxes. And Ray Del Court, who was the Assistant Fire Chief, just retired from Pratt Whitney. And he was their lead safety officer at Pratt Whitney. And he is now where he's retired, our Assistant Fire Chief. Um, I'm going to, after the first D M A K M. Uh, in a part-time position of town safety, wide safety officer. Is going to put together a safety committee that will read monthly with the department heads. Will review all state, all potential accidents and then incidents, get reports back, work with Jen. Which aligns us with positive labor safety standards, so. And he's more than, we're getting excited to do that. He's just jumping around. His wife, very happy. She sent a. Thank you note saying, thank you for finding something to get him out of. And Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Um, help some more comments, John?
Uh, home for the holidays was great. The tree lighting was fantastic. Um. Committee did wonders. Uh, kudos to them. They did a fantastic job. Everybody seemed to enjoy it, and other than that, uh, we have nothing to lap with, so. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas or a Happy Holiday, however they decide to celebrate it.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate on something that Tim mentioned about our public works and how they handled our first big storm of the season. Um, it was very nice to get out. Um, I also had to be out at about four thirty in the morning to go do snow removal services. And to have our road salted already. You hit the York Line, nothing was done, you know, so. Kudos to them, but if we could maybe check the calibration on the selters where it was hitting my house. Um, just don't wanna waste that very expensive material that we know, uh, goes into those trucks. Um. But other than that, uh, like John said, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Um, there is. Central, and the city thirty-five schools have been a Petri dish, and there is a blue planet at Marshall Brickwork School right next door to me. On Thursday from two to four in the gym. Um, today I received eight emails from the news section of the town's website, so I just wanted to make sure that, um. Administratively, when we're touching the website, we just understand what an end user sees. And when I get eight emails, the next time I get an email from the town, I may not put on it, so I just wanted to kind of. Um, for that. Uh, very different, when you subscribe to news updates from the town. Um, there were eight emails that went out today about a job posting.
If I may, what happens is, we found there was a pipe hole. So we had to pull the document. Then we had to reload the new document. And every time I kept trying to reload the new document, for some reason, it was attaching the old document. So I go in and look at it, it's like, no, it's still a document. So that's why you got so many.
Yeah.
It's a live system. It's a live system, that's.
Okay, it's got bugs. Good job.
And it just notifies you like when there's changes regardless of what the teams are. I wonder if they're with a new website, like is that. Will be that be different?
I know, we'll bring it up to Dawn.
Okay.
It is on the bottom of some pages, you can say, no, don't send an email, but yes, you can.
Yeah.
And if you don't go back and forth and back and forth and scroll all the way down and back.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure that we're having good, good communication. Um, we also received a Spirit of America email, and I wanted to float that by the town council. It's like the deadline was for June thirtieth. And the past award recipients from South Borough were twenty-seventeen, the Flag Brigade, twenty-nineteen, Louise Anderson, twenty-twenty. Brendan Boyle and twenty-twenty-one, the Leash. Brendan Boyle and twenty twenty-one, the Leach family, so if the town council is interested in nominating a local person, project or group to receive the twenty twenty-three South Burke Spirit of America Foundation tribute. For outstanding community service, using our criteria, we just need to do that at our town meeting, so I wanted to throw that on our radar. Um, I just also had a quick question about what is our next. Action item for the town hall conversation?
I'm doing the. I'm, I'm, I'm doing the RFP. To get that back, so I'll sign that out. And finishing that draft and, and once I get that back, I'll find out, I gotta have my. Bottle, we're gonna, uh, prove for me, we'll send that out, get that back, then you'll have to. You'll have to approve that, or hire someone to do that.
And that's for the assessment.
The assessment of the building, yep, and then that'll be the assessment of the building. And probably that'll be done by spring, but then hopefully then they'll give us a report and then we'll look at that and move forward. I just, trying to get stuff done, but, you know, if staff can't go on vacation, it would help me out.
Those palm trees are calling my name. Um, any else, that's it, thank you, Jeff?
I just had a couple of little questions too, uh, just as far as you guys have had a lot of stuff thrown at you. Are we fully staffed at police department still?
No. One, one lap.
Yeah.
Going down one. Alright, we're down one, you're in all type of, we're down one.
I knew of one, that was.
That's it, that I know of.
Yeah, and then the gentleman who was out on military is back.
Right, we got one out.
There's another one that's gonna be leaving us.
Well, he hasn't made anything.
No, nothing's fallen, that is.
Transfer station stickers? Do we need to take an action on that? I, there was talk about it, I didn't know.
Right, so, so I had gone back to. Dan and Jay and said, if we don't need to, let's not, if it's working, and then they said it was working up until. Last department head meeting, so I gotta get back with Jay and Dan. And if they say that's not what we wanna do, then we'll go after the first of the year.
Okay.
We'll figure something out, I'll come back to you and we'll make a motion to get it started. I just gotta meet with them and figure out if that's, it would seem to be working, but all of a sudden, it's, I've come, it's coming back and.
Tense the waters.
I had a lady come in the other day, she was, she, she went to transfer station, um, cause she had contractors renovating her house. She told the contractor to dump it there, so the contractor went there and. Dan said, no, he ended this, hold this for, so they went back to her, well, she was mad at them in April's end, and she'd come. Flying in my office at four thirty one afternoon, I said, oh, great, great, just sit right down, there you go, it's right, well, I can't stay too long. At five thirty, I was still showing her my documents, I had the budget book out, yeah, you see how this goes here, this goes here, this. And she quickly realized, and she said that, she goes, well, isn't this a wash? I mean, isn't it, like, we get money in it, I said, no, no, and I took the budget book out and showed her. About three hundred and eighty thousand from the transfer station, we get about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. In, in revenue, it's not a wash. And it's getting more expensive. And it's not right, the, the tax, you know, so I explained the whole thing to her, when I was done, she said, oh, okay, I understand it now. I really gotta go, but she said, I said, okay.
Should record that.
And so.
Little YouTube videos.
Absolutely.
Um, other question, I think, there, there was a, um. Karen's issue with the Paul Street lot, I mean. You were gonna take it on to figure.
Propose some changes.
Yeah, I, we haven't, I haven't had a chance to do anything with that.
Okay.
That's just, I, you know, you guys, that was last meeting, you guys said, you know, go ahead, that'll be, it'll be a couple, it'll be a month or two project before we're even close to the thing of that.
And then, uh. Marijuana and.
So we need, we need to, yeah, that's what I presented, so we need to do a workshop on the, uh. Solar bomb thing, and that needs to be done sooner than later and marijuana, it can go, but. You wanna schedule something?
You had suggested to me the seventeenth of January.
Yes. That would be a joint session with the planning board.
Is that the day of our understanding?
No, it's an open, that's an open.
Does that work, does that date work for the planning board?
Yeah, they thought it did.
Does anyone have any concerns with seventeenth January?
Not as long as we have something. That they're not gonna change again.
Yeah, as long as we need to get the documents ahead of time.
I, I, I would like a document that that's what we're gonna discuss. That's all, that's all I ask.
Absolutely. Okay, so let's go ahead and we'll schedule, um, a joint workshop with the planning board for January seventeenth, six thirty, the police station. Um, to cover solar ordinance and cannabis, and then if we can try to get the. The latest version of those ordinances, I don't know, like, if, if we have them, if we can get them. Doing it rather later, yeah, okay.
I fixed that.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate all the information, um, and then, um. Just been busy, uh, doing, um. Holiday stuff, um, I would briefly breeze through, um, home for the holidays and, uh. And, uh, saw busy and it was, it's. Encouraging to see the, the lights and the people and the holidays and, uh, appreciative of. The committee and the people that spent a lot of time. Uh, working on it, um, and, uh, yeah, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, um, the only thing I had was the workshop stuff, which we got that sorted out, so, um. That's it, um, happy holidays, everyone, um, and I think we have an executive session, um, so we'll be. In a moment going into an executive session, um, which we'll turn off the recording and stuff and then we'll adjourn and Barbara, I'll send you all the motions up for both of us. Can I get a motion to go into the example?
Uh, yeah, madam chair, we, we moved into executive session, MSRA six, MSR so for.
Four oh five six A.
Four oh five six A, I don't have it open at the moment.
Alright, we have a motion in second, all those in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? We are in executive session, um, if we can end.